Okay, we are gonna call our open meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone is well. I would like to ask our clerk to report actions taken in closed session.
On a seven to zero vote regarding claim number 640130, the governing board in closed session voted to issue a notice of rejection of claim pursuant to Government Code Section 913. The governing board further authorizes the Vice Chancellor of Business Services or her designee to enter any appropriate, to issue rather, any appropriate notices.
Thank you for that, Trustee Eminem. Now have the invocation led by Trustee Rydell, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Trustee Dack. If you are able, please stand.
Good evening, everyone. As we gather here today, let us take a moment to reflect on the recent events surrounding the attempted assassination of former President Donald Trump. While this incident has stirred many emotions, let us focus on our shared hope for peace and understanding. In times of uncertainty, may we come together with a spirit of compassion and unity. Let us strive for dialogue over division and empathy over anonymity. And as we work towards a future where such acts of violence are replaced with respectful discourse and collaborative efforts for the common good, may our meeting be guided by these principles of peace and solidarity tonight and always. Thank you.
I'll be leading the pledge. Get face the flag. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now have a special recognition of our, I see them in the audience, our Saddleback College Mars Rover student competition team. And for this item, I would like to ask Trustee Milchiger to say a few words.
Okay, I'm honored to say a few words. And I'll also use this as my board report, so no worries. This evening, I'm honored to take part in our, to take part in our board honoring our Mars Rover team, which represents students from Saddleback and also from Irvine Valley College. We have a plethora of research opportunities for students at our colleges, led by professors who volunteer their time to enable students to test their wings, fly, and build their resumes to transfer to their dream schools, and I applaud them all. We should honor these students. And we do. Reputations of colleges are built primarily on the foundations of our high-quality activities and achievements. By doing so, we are building a first-rate identity and a compelling narrative for our colleges. And we do, we do, we do that. And this evening, we are building the reputation of our colleges by honoring the students on our Mars Rover team. I have had the privilege of serving as the volunteer science advisor for this incredible team for the past two years. I've gotten to know these hard-working, brilliant students and their brilliant, hard-working, caring advisors, Professor Mitch Hayary and Jim Repka and astronomy tech Jason Smith. The University Rover Challenge, or URC, is the yearly international engineering and science competition hosted by the Mars Society. Students design and build a Mars rover, right there, you could see, you could see what they built this past year, with a robotic arm, an onboard life detection experiment, and autonomous navigation systems. The competition culminates in the URC finals, where the top teams travel to the Mars Desert Research Station near Hanksville, Utah, to participate in four missions: extreme retrieval, equipment servicing, science, and autonomy. I've traveled on the van with the team and their advisors twice to Hanksville, Utah, in two years. And these brilliant students I could see in the van and when they worked on the rover have found their tribe, and it's wonderful to see. A hundred and two top universities from 15 countries competed in the competition this year. Only 38 were invited to compete in Utah, and we made it into the competition once again. Saddleback and IVC continue to be the only community colleges qualified to travel to Hanksville, Utah, to compete. The other ones are four-year institutions with graduate students and all kinds of extra funds. To be in Hanksville is to feel like you're already on Mars, and our team did an incredible job, beating Cal Poly Pomona, Georgia Tech, Cornell, India, Bangladesh, Berkeley, Cal Tech, Princeton, and Stanford. After the competition, the team's rovers participated in a lively, friendly competition and tug-of-war between the rovers. Memories were made. Everyone who participated in the University Rover competition were volunteers, from the NASA judges, the advisors, even the head of the program. Our students' multidisciplinary teams returned from Hanksville to begin to build their next rover, starting from scratch, the week they came back. The science team worked on determining their newest project to ident, and the science team worked on determining their newest project to identify living organisms in the soil, in the soil samples that the rover collects. They create a different project every single year. This is real science in action, doing the research and doing the work to compete. I'm so honored to be able to join the Board of Trustees this evening in recognizing the incredible efforts of the rover team. Team, your efforts demonstrate that the sky is not the limit and the space exploration is more tangible for our students than ever before. I have no doubt that this group of talented individuals, who are so deserving of this honor, will help lead our future to build the next generations of Mars rovers to actually explore the red planet. They will be delighted that the rovers they build will be contented to be on Mars, where they were designed to live out their rest of their lives. Congratulations to the team, and sincere thanks to Chancellor Barnes, President Stern, and Hernandez, President Jamal, and the entire Board of Trustees for indulging me in this special recognition. Thank you. And I think, I think Mitch Hayary would be happy to stand up and say a few words and maybe introduce the team and have the team come forward as well. Thank you. And also, the, I'll hand it over to Professor Hayary at this, at this moment.
Oh geez, the whole room stand up here. We can fill the room. Marcia, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, the very first thing I want to do is, is thank the college, okay? And I got this email, I think, two, three weeks ago, from President Stern, saying, can you please present your accomplishments at the board meeting tonight? And of course, I'm like, yes, 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 yes. I'm not gonna argue with that, okay? All right? Okay? So, so thank you, President Stern, for inviting us, okay? My thanks goes out to the entire college leadership team. This is not just us here, although this is a majority of it here, okay? But our dean, Arnita, and our Vice President of Instruction, Tram, and our President Stern, Dr. Stern, okay? And Juliana, our...
Chancellor?
Chancellor, sorry, okay? I'm trying to remember all these names here. I apologize, okay?
I wrote it down.
Okay, all right. And everything, and of course, Marcia, our board member Marcia. And we have never had such cohesive cooperation between management and faculty and students and classified staff. It's just amazing. We was fighting each other. Why? We didn't this time. We got the job done. So some notable statistics, which some of you will appreciate here, is, now I have to put on my old man glasses, okay? All right? Is, so, there were 108 participants. Of these 108 participants, 38 made it to the finals. In these finals, there were four categories. There was science, there was autonomy, there was retrieval, what I like to call heavy retrieval, in other words, go grab an astronaut and bring him back, okay? And so forth, any event. So, we came in, overall, 17th, and this is the average score, 17th out of 38 finalists. Now, I always, I always tell my students, that's not the important thing. Who did we beat? Okay? All right? So, I go down this list here, and it's Cal Poly Pomona, Georgia Tech, Cornell University, UC Berkeley, Cal Tech, Princeton University, Stanford University. We were the only two-year college who's been participating in this for the past five years, and consistently we're beating them. In other words, this is a testimony to our students, our faculty, okay? And our management. We are doing the job, our students are doing the walk, okay? And all I can say is, I'm so proud of them. And out there at the site, you know, I became kinda teary-eyed because I saw how well they did on the retrieval, all right, beating everybody else. So, I would like to introduce Troy behind me, okay? Where are you? Oh, you're not behind me, okay? Well, before I do that, here, we have advisors, which I like to point out, and all the advisors volunteer their time. So, I'm one of the advisors, and Marcia's the other advisor, Dr. Jim Repka's the other advisor, and Jason Smith is the fourth advisor. Now, this year, okay, again, we're on the map, which means we're getting a lot more attention from faculty. I would love more help, okay? Instead of me coming in on Sunday and opening up the doors and all this other stuff here, but Dr. Larry Perez is, is our newest advisor to the Mars Rover team. So, I thank him. He is not here tonight, okay? He had other obligations. So, the main folks who made this happen are standing right here, okay? Our students. I will put our students up against any Princeton student, any Ivy League graduate student, okay? That's what we're up against. And they did the job. They beat them. So, without much ado, I will be quiet, and I'm gonna hand it off to you. Troy, go ahead, introduce yourself.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Troy. I've been the student team lead this past year, and leading this team has been a real honor. It's, I feel this team creates really great educational opportunities for all of the students we have here. Here onsite, we've got about half the team with us. In total, we're around 30 strong. And I feel that this team creates really excellent learning opportunities for these students to gain hands-on STEM in engineering experience, and we hope to, moving forward, continue expanding our team and continue sharing those experiences in the STEM field. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we're done.
Well, we would like to give you a plaque and take a picture.
Oh, oh, plaques and pictures, okay. Yes. I am so sorry.
The team, I think, could stand down here? Is that the best place, in front?
Yeah, right in front.
Okay. Well, come on. Yay. Congratulations. Thank you, students. You're awesome.
Congratulations. Congratulations, everyone.
Congratulations. Yes. Can you use your...
All right, that was awesome. Congratulations again, team.
Oh, thank you. That was so fun.
Okay. We're now on to our employee acknowledgement presentation, 3.6, and I think it's gonna be handled by Cindy Viscaill.
Yes, thank you so much. It is my pleasure to introduce to you Lieutenant Richard Nelson from Saddleback College. The Police Service Association asked for a moment to acknowledge staff members for a very unique circumstance, and I'm not gonna, I'll let Lieutenant Nelson discuss why these folks are being acknowledged. So, go ahead, Lieutenant Nelson, thank you.
Thank you very much, Cindy. President Jamal, Chancellor Barnes, Board of Trustees, everyone in attendance, thank you very much for coming here and good evening. I'm here to acknowledge two employees that helped out Saddleback PD.
I don't think your mic is...
I'm here acknowledging, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Want me to start over, or did you hear the acknowledgements?
You can start over.
Okay. Good evening, President Jamal, Chancellor Barnes, Board of Trustees, everyone here in attendance. Thank you very much for attending here today. I'm here to acknowledge two Saddleback College employees for their assistance in apprehending a suspect here. So, I'm gonna read off kind of the situation, so you hear. On Saturday, May 18th, at approximately 11:35 hours, Saddleback College PD received a phone call from Assistant Director of Facilities, College, from Assistant Facilities and Operations, Mike James. Mike told Saddleback PD, there was a subject on campus who did not look like an employee pushing a Rubbermaid trashcan containing cleaning supplies that looked like college property. Assistant Director of Facilities, Capital Outlay Projects, Curtis Guy, and Mike James stopped to talk to the subject at the bus turnaround. Moments later, after receiving the call, Officer Lance Christensen arrived on scene and detained the subject. Saddleback's PD investigation, utilizing fixed cameras in and outside of the buildings on campus, discovered a suspect had entered the Health Science Building that was open for class. He gathered up electronics, cleaning supplies, and other cleaning equipment, and placed all of them inside a trashcan and started heading towards the bus turnaround. The estimated loss that was recovered and returned to FMO totaled approximately $6,000. It was also discovered from interviews that Curtis and Mike asked him if he had new, knew the employee working in the area of the Health Science Building. Mike told them no, and he contacted campus police. If there are not for the quick actions of both Curtis and Mike, the suspect may have literally gotten away with the crime, utilizing an OCTA bus as a getaway vehicle.
Oh, my gosh.
A few weeks ago, the suspect pled guilty to grand theft, which is good news. On a side note, the suspect in this case was released from the Orange County Jail in Santa Ana at 2:00 AM that Saturday morning, and somehow made his way here to our campus. The reason we are here today is to recognize both Curtis and Mike for being Saddleback PD's extra eyes and ears, and while working on the campus, if not for their knowledge of employees, their care for campus property and safety, this suspect would have stolen Saddleback College's property and cost the taxpayers and FMO's budget approximately $6,000 to replace those items. I would like to bring the light to the board, the Chancellor Barnes, President Stern, and President Jamal, that on numerous occasions, Saddleback receives calls or is flagged down by FMO faculty, I mean administration, I mean staff, faculty, administration, reporting suspicious activity or potential crimes to us. I'm also very grateful for the collaboration between everyone who works here at Saddleback to help keep this campus safe for the students, as well as employees and all who visits us. We are always grateful for your help. I would like to now thank Curtis and Mike, if you could please come up, for an outstanding job, and give them a Saddleback PD challenge coin to show our token of appreciation for their role in apprehending a criminal on campus, but for the successful conviction of the suspect due to their keen observations and quick actions, our campus community is a safer place because of both of you. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. I really appreciate your help, you helped us out. Appreciate you both again. I appreciate you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. You would think we attacked the guy and dropped it.
Thank, Mike and Curtis, thank, thank you again.
Questions, do they know what the challenge coins are for?
They probably don't, but it was old, do I have time? I don't know how much time I have.
It's a great story.
Okay, do you want me to kind of tell it, or?
They should know.
Sure. Okay. The challenge coin is an old military, kind of a symbolism for, it was used by pilots, and they use it to have their, wherever base they worked on, or whatever group they were employed, designated with, and they'd go out drinking, and if, if my memory serves me right, if you had your coin and you put it down, and correct me if I'm wrong, and you put it down, and nobody else had one, then you had to buy drinks, they had to buy drinks for everybody. So, that's why everyone carries a challenge coin. And so, because...
Leave it at home.
Yeah, so because some police departments are paramilitary in nature, they've kind of adopted those things, and there's a lot of military personnel who join police departments, they've kind of adopted that custom, even though there's not a lot of pilots in the police department, they've kind of adopted that custom. Did I get it right? I'm, okay. Pretty close, okay? Yes, yes, yes. But not on campus, not on campus.
Thank you, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, board. Have a great night. Thank you for your time. I appreciate all of you, and thank you to those gentlemen right there.
Yep. Okay. Well, we're moving on to 3.7, taking on a little bit more serious note. So, ladies and gentlemen, at this time, I would like to reserve this moment in the meeting to make a presentation in honor of our former trustee, Nancy M. Padberg, whose service to the Board of Trustees spanned over two decades, since 1998. Her daughter Nicole, who's here with us, referred to her as a force of nature and revered her for her passion and ambition. From a young age, Nancy was a superstar involved in various activities and interests which earned her respect and esteem from all who had the privilege of knowing her. After earning her undergraduate degree at Florida State University and then a master's degree at the University of Chicago in social work, she met the love of her life, Thomas Padberg, who I also had the opportunity to get to know a little bit. Nancy and Tom were soon married with child Nicole and found themselves in Southern California. In Los Angeles, Nancy pursued her chosen profession of social work with UCLA, where she also taught Lamaze classes. After about 10 years, they moved to San Clemente, and it was in South County that Nancy was described to have flourished, according to Nicole. She quickly got a job working at UCI as a social worker, but something pushed her to go back to school. Having witnessed wrongdoing and child abuse in the Orange County school systems, Nancy found herself compelled to go to law school and get a law degree. And of course, in 1991, she did and succeeded in passing the bar and getting her JD. In the mid-1990s, she ran for this board and won a seat as a trustee and served for nearly two decades. Throughout her tenure, Nancy exemplified unwavering dedication and commitment to our district, winning five consecutive elections and serving with distinction in many roles, including president, vice president, and clerk. She was a champion of fundraising for student scholarships through support of the foundations and other fundraising initiatives over the span of her time as a trustee. Her support for the Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College foundations was instrumental in garnering donations and annual fund, for annual fundraising galas, significantly increasing opportunities for students to pursue their educational goals. She and Tom loved supporting the students in many athletic activities. Quite often, you could find Nancy and Tom along the sidelines at Saddleback College football or basketball games. Nancy was truly one of a kind and will be incredibly missed. And so, I just want to say, I actually went, where's Nicole? I met your mother, actually, during the campaign, when I first ran in 2012, and your description of her as one of a kind is absolutely true. She was truly a force of nature. I went back and watched the first board meeting, that I, I just felt like I, I wanted to do that. I never, I hadn't watched it since I was elected and sworn in in 2012. I went back and watched the first board meeting where I was sworn in, and several things stood out. One, how gracious she was to me, you know, you know, your mother was, ran a tight ship. Yeah. And we weren't allowed to speak like this. She'd probably be stopping me right now. We only had two minutes, but during my, my portion, she really paused, and she actually forced me to introduce my family members, and I had forgotten all this, that were in the audience and other supporters who were with me during the campaign, and, and she was just so, so gracious and made me feel so welcome. Although, the next meeting, when I offered the three board reports, she wasn't as happy as the last board meeting, because of, but, but she ran a tight ship. And it was just a joy to work with her, a joy to come on this board when she was board president, and she was so passionate about this district, about Irvine Valley College and Saddleback, but because I think she lived in San Clemente, you know, she had, she and Tom had a strong connection to Saddleback College and were amazing cheerleaders for the college, and then helping out with IVC and Saddleback and the foundations and the fundraising. So, I just want to say with deep sincerity, and on behalf of our entire Board of Trustees, we extend our condolences to all who love Nancy, including many of us on this board. And at this time, I would like to present, Nicole, would present you a plaque, well, before which, I'd like to invite you to come up and say a few words, and then when you come up here, we'll, we'll present you the plaque.
Thank you so much for everything you said. I'm gonna try and not cry. I wrote something really tiny and small, because I wanted to keep it brief, but you said so many things that I kind of wanted to just touch on a little bit. First of all, it is very weird to be in this room and not see Nancy Padberg on one of those plaques, because every time I've been here, there's been a Nancy Padberg plaque. But that's okay, because I can see your name all over the place on this, this building, which is just amazing to me. The Mars Rover presentation that you had, my mother would have been so proud. That was one thing that she was emphatic about Saddleback and Irvine, is that these two-year colleges compete at such high levels with the UC systems and the state systems. And I know that she's here tonight, and she is smiling, and she's probably really happy that I got to see that. So, I just wanted to say that. And all of you that came up to me before the presentation, before the open session tonight, it means so much to me. It really does. Your hugs and everything, this is even better than a memorial. This is how my mother, my mother would have wanted it, and my father too. So, with that said, I will read my tiny little thing that I wrote, but I'm gonna have to put my glasses on, because I've gotten older. Okay. Thank you so much. My mother Nancy Padberg loved serving on the South Orange County Community College District's Board of Trustees. She and my father were regular fixtures at Saddleback College sporting events, as you mentioned. They loved Saddleback so very much, when they were laid to rest, both of them. They're, they're both wearing the Saddleback College pins and colors.
Wow.
It is my sincere honor to be here tonight, to represent her, and thank all of you for honoring her legacy. I love you, Mom, and I know both you and Dad are here with me, with all of us tonight. I love you, Mom, and I know both you and Dad are here with me, with all of us tonight. Thank you.
Nicole, thank you for that. I'm going to invite you to come up here, but I want to just read, so everyone, um, can see, we're going to be presenting Nicole with a, with a plaque, uh, in memory of Nancy Padberg, South Orange County Community College District Board Member, Board President. Uh, she held every role here. And it says, "We honor Nancy's memory and appreciate her contributions to our district. Nancy was a well-respected member of the board and a true leader. She mentored new board members and fostered an environment of lifelong learning. Nancy, Nancy will be missed and her legacy will continue at the South Orange County Community College District."
Wow, this is what it was like to be my mom.
And this is where she sat.
Wow. Thank you. Yeah, everybody, come on in. Oh, thank you. Let me put my glasses down.
Nicole, thank you again for coming. Okay, we're now on to public comments. Do we have any requests for public comments? We don't. And we'll turn to 4.0, board reports, 4.1, and I'll turn to my left, trustee Dec.
All right, good evening. So for my board report today, uh, it's pretty slow in July, as you may imagine, but I did attend the legislative subcommittee meeting on July 10th and I'm really proud of our legislative advocates that we have just taken on. I believe it was in, within this last year, we've made a lot of strides at the state and national level, so, uh, you know, very productive meeting. It also came to my attention this week that former board member Jim Wright passed away last week. And as the newest member on the board and someone who is now sitting in the seat that he was in, I'm the only board member who has not served with Jim, uh, but I know he had a monumental impact on the community here at South Orange County Community College District, uh, and at Saddleback as well as a dean of, I believe it was, uh, mathematics, science, and engineering. I challenged and lost to Jim in 2020, uh, but his ability to recognize when it's time to step back and be with his family, um, it really, I don't know. I've been thinking about that the last couple of days because as you may know, there have been other people in politics that have decided to take a step back, um, due to age and be with the family. So, um, his ability to recognize when it was time to pass a torch to someone else is why I'm here today. And I'm eternally grateful to Jim for recognizing that, um, and being able to be up here with all these fine trustees today. So my thoughts are with the Wright family, um, and, uh, I wish them well.
Thank you for that. Trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, um, I'm going to kind of save some of my comments about Jim for next month. I assume we'll be doing something similar. So I kind of wanted to go back to Nancy Padberg. Uh, I think I said last, last meeting, you know, she was, and you mentioned this and Nicole mentioned it, that she was extremely supportive of new trustees as they came on, so much so, the first, first night I got sworn in, she nominated me for vice president. And, uh, but just the, speaking about the athletics, it flooded back a memory. Uh, the very first Saddleback football game I went to, uh, and as I, Tom, Tom and Nancy were always in their chairs in the end zone. So I made the mistake of not knowing that and bringing my own chair, uh, and was told I needed to stand with them, uh, during the game. But, uh, it happened, that game fell on the same night as Notre Dame versus USC and I could not wear Saddleback colors that night. So I wore my Notre Dame sweatshirt and she gave me a lot of flack. A lot of flack. So from then on, whenever that happened, I wore the Saddleback sweatshirt over the Notre Dame sweatshirt. But, uh, yeah, it just, she, they were really big fans and supporters of the district as a whole. But, you know, just great people and truly, truly will be missed. And that's all I have.
Thank you for that. Trustee Enman.
It has been a little bit slow, but I too was at the Legislative Subcommittee, uh, the committee that we started a couple of years ago. And on the topic of legislation, just under a year ago, I was appointed to the Public Policy and Advocacy Committee of the National Association of Community College Trustees. And we've been having meetings. We had a meeting in person at the last conference, uh, and now we have Zoom meetings. And it's very interesting, in all honesty, I don't hear much, that we don't hear from our new advocates that, um, that we have. So that part's interesting. But the part that I really like is that the topic of, or the goal of that committee is to help with the legislative priorities for the next Congress. So we're looking, we're creating them right now, the 119th Congress, which will be 2025. So to begin with, the committee and of course staff gathered input from all of the, the colleges that were willing and interested in participating. And thanks to Letitia Clark, as always, we, um, we participated in that. Uh, one of the main goals has been to help veterans and one of the things that we put down as a specific thing was, quote, "To ensure that community colleges can effectively translate military training and experience into academic credit, reducing the time and cost for veterans to complete their degrees." So these are the kinds of things that are very interesting in order to, to participate in. So that draft is now circulating. At our August meeting, we will pretty much finalize it. And then after, um, the board finalizes our finalize, finalization, then it will be ready for the, the summit in Washington DC in February. So it's a pleasure to be able to participate in these kinds of things and be a part of, part of the system. Regarding Nancy, I wish her, her daughter was still here, but I didn't know her as well as some of you did, obviously. But when I ran almost successfully in 2008, she was available to me to answer questions since I knew a lot about other things, but not necessarily this board or this situation. So I had some very wonderful meetings with her and she was incredibly helpful and gracious in giving and we are all sad to see that she is no longer with us. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Trustee Wright.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to dovetail just a couple of sentences about Nancy and I too. I'm sad that Nicole left because I appreciate her coming all the way from Las Vegas to be here with us, uh, tonight. I would also like to, to confirm what it says in our public session, uh, number three, and that was that she served on this board from December 1998 to June to, uh, 2015 with remarkable dedication and contributed significantly, significantly to the district's growth and success during her tenure. From June to, into the fall, I did have the privilege of helping take care of her. And this woman was incredibly tenacious. Even though she knew that something was not right with her all the time, she stood back or sat over here at the end because she was still in that seat and came back a couple of times. But I think what the hardest was in all those, those months was that she realized she couldn't stay. And I think maybe someone may have suggested it. She looked at me and she says, "I don't, don't think I want to do that." And I said, "Well, you need to do what you think you can do." And she realized she couldn't. And what a difficult decision that was for her. And that to me is one remarkable lady. And I also like to just share, and I know next month we'll talk more about Jim, but I want to tell you what I think he stood for. He stood for hard work and its rewards. I think he stood for perseverance, humility, hope, his love for Saddleback College, love his, his fam, for his family and for Janice, and love for his country. And I hope I can, next month, just give you a little quick glimpse of what he once shared with me. I went to visit him at his house and he had been, um, away from school for a while. He was not even allowed to leave the country because of what he knew and what his classification was with the government. Pretty impressive. Here's our math teacher, here's our dean, and when I found all that out, I said, "Do you leave the country now?" At any rate, I look forward to us remembering him. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Wright. Trustee Jay.
I'm sorry Nancy's daughter left. I knew Nancy through my husband, Bill, and went to see her a couple of times when she was recovering in the hospital. She was so well white and I'm, I had never met her daughter before, so I really wanted to meet her, but she left. So anyway, I'll get to my report. My report is on the, the Irvine Valley Foundation is gearing up for another great year. On Friday, August the 2nd, the IVC Foundation Board of Governors will hold their annual planning retreat. We will engage in activities and discussions to establish goals for the next year and determine how the members will engage in these activities. Their time of events is already set and I encourage you to, to follow the dates and remember these dates. Thursday, October 17th is the fifth annual giving day. Friday, March 7th, 2025 is celebrating excellence at the Marconi Auto Museum, the same as last year. Friday, May 16th, 2025, the scholarship ceremony. Investing in our students by making a gift to either the IVC Foundation or the Saddleback College Foundation is impactful and meaningful. I encourage you to look at opportunities to engage with either or both foundations. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Milchick.
I, I promised I wouldn't give a board report, so I'm not, I'm going to fulfill that promise and not give a board report. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. I agree with trustee Prendergast. I'll, I'll reserve, uh, more words for trustee Wright at, uh, the next board meeting. But, uh, my condolences are to his family. I served with trustee Wright, uh, for almost, um, 10, I guess 10 years. Yeah, 10 years on the board together. And trustee Wright is a, was a man of honor, uh, integrity and loved this institution. Um, and we, we saw that every day. One more to say about, I think, him at the next meeting, but I did want to read out, uh, because it's going to come before the next board meeting, that funeral services will be held next Friday, uh, July 26th at 11:00 AM at the Church of Latter Day Saints in Rancho Santa Margarita, uh, at, uh, Via Con Dios. And then a viewing will be held, I guess, this Friday evening from 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM at Fairhaven Memorial in Mission Viejo. So I wanted to just let people know that. I'm sorry? I'm sorry. The viewing will be held Thursday evening, uh, from 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM at Fairhaven Memorial in Mission Viejo. And on Friday at 9:30 AM at the funeral site. And I'm reading from Dr. Stern's, uh, letter that went out to the community. And thank you for the letter, uh, you sent to the entire Saddleback community. Thank you. Okay. So with that, um, I think trustee, student trustee Clemente, your report.
Hi, um, good evening, everybody. I, over the summer, I attended an event hosted by Saddleback and, um, Claire Cesario, um, she was the one who reached out to me at a class, um, with her at Saddleback. And, um, it was called Design S Print Innovation Event and it allowed, uh, students to learn how to present research by generating innovative ideas and new solutions, um, from their lived experiences. So this included Next Up students, un, incarcerated students, LGBTQIA students, DSP students, and any students from any, um, underserved communities. And I had a great experience there and I feel like, um, I'm excited for Claire to bring on her research team and present it to IVC in hopes that, um, our Next Up program and our student life can also benefit from this work. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Now on to ASG reports. So we'll start, I guess, with Saddleback College.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, just as in last month's meeting, I'd like to say that I hope everyone is enjoying their summer and keeping it cool during this heat wave. I'm here to announce that a few hours ago, our ASG leadership has approved funding for multiple events through fall 2024 semester, uh, such as our homecoming events. Uh, I'm working on a personal task of mine, which is our Student Voter Engagement Plan to have students registered and informed about, uh, local campaigns and federal campaigns that are happening. Uh, I've reached out to congressional campaigns of District 49 and District 40 to have forums on our campus and engage, uh, with students. Uh, this is, uh, this upcoming election November will be the most important that our students will vote in. And, uh, based off of all the events that have happened in July, uh, this really is the most important election. My directors and senators are, of all, of the, of all ASG committees are continuing to in, interview candidates for officer positions. Uh, I expect our organization will be filled up, uh, by the start, by the start of the semester in August. And with that, my office report is concluded. Thank you all very much for having me.
Thank you for that report. IVC ASG.
Good evening, everyone. As you all may know, our advisor, Dr. Amric Joe Hall, will not be coming back to advise the 24, 25 school year, um, as he has sought new opportunities at Palomar College. For now, Ms. Erin Pollard, the current Director of College Equity, Inclusion, and Access, has been delegated to fill the duties of Assistant Dean of Students while IVC looks for someone more permanent to fill the position. Dr. Amric was a great mentor and he will be remembered for how much he empowered the students of ASIVC. And although I will miss working with him, I'm very excited to see what ASIVC will look like under new leadership. It has been wonderful getting to know Ms. Erin Pollard, along with the rest of our ASIVC executives during our weekly meetings. And I look forward to this year as I am beginning to see a clear picture of what's to come for ASIVC. We're currently planning several events such as Welcome Week, our Halloween event, and De-Stress Week to facilitate a student life on campus throughout the fall semester. And the executives and I have also started drafting our goals for the year. Some of the initiatives we wish to implement are workshops in gaining financial literacy for students, working with the Counseling Department to better accommodate students, um, creating workshops for club officers to encourage them to make use of their funds and begin to fundraise due to our shrinking budget. And we plan to hold various events focused on voter education and engage voting aid students, getting them interested in the election. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Now, uh, turning to Irvine Valley College Academic Senate.
Hello, good evening. I hope all of you are doing well. I wanted to give you a quick little update on some of the work our faculty are doing now over the summer. It hasn't been quiet, as some of you have said, and I'm thinking, what, what are we doing? But what we're doing is, we are getting ready for two major events and projects. The first one is a Center for Professional Learning, which all of you have heard me describe before. And so we have been busy working with creating the programming. And we are again basing it on the five, um, we're calling them themes, but they're pretty much strands. So we're going to have a strand on DIA, technology workplace skills. We're bringing back IVC to IVC because we believe that a lot of the untapped resources we have is the knowledge of our faculty and our classified professionals and administrators. And so the programming is being created. The physical space, not yet. We are very, working closely with our Office of Instruction, particularly our VPI Miranda has been great in supporting us in creating the space, designing, um, picking out furniture, all that good stuff. So we are hoping we are, we will have this center, um, open for business in spring of 25. The other project is curriculum. And so as you may have heard us talk about, the bill called AB 1111, which is a common course numbering bill, where all courses in community colleges are going to need to have similar numbering. I want to give a shout out to our colleagues who are going through phase one, and those are faculty in the discipline. faculty in the disciplines of Writing, Communication, Stats, American Government, and Psych, because they are the first ones going through it. And so they've been having convenings over the summer on how those course outlines of records are going to look like, because those have to be in place by fall of '25. So our colleagues have been busy getting all that ready. Lastly, I do want to extend my condolences to the family, friends, and colleagues of former trustee Jim Wright. I do, I was here when I, he was here, part of the board when I was first hired, and I remember his contributions have always left a lasting impact on the way that I learned about the district. And with heartfelt gratitude and respect, I thank you. Thank you to him and his legacy that he has left. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Saddleback College Academic Senate.
President Jamal, Chancellor Barnes, member of the board. Good evening. I'll be brief. It's summer and things are mostly quiet. Faculty are, however, getting ready for fall, and updating anything in Canvas is incredibly tedious, so please be nice to us. In the next couple of weeks, senate leadership has planned meetings with our college administration. I'm looking forward to working together over the next few years with them. I was going to comment on the contract negotiations and encourage a positive outcome, because it does affect our academic programs. Successful faculty mean successful programs. But the recent passing of trustees Padberg and Wright cannot go unrecognized. Both were fierce advocates for our students and education. I hired into the district a year after Nancy was on the board, and I, I was a weird faculty member who, my first year, I'd go, I'm going to go to board meetings. So I sat through many of those, interesting to say the least, board meetings in the early 2000s, and it's nice to see things have calmed down so much. Nancy was here the first time I was senate president, and as trustee Jamal said, she was very gracious to me personally and offered any suggestions and help if I had any questions. And I, of course, had worked with Jim prior to being a board member, and he was always a friend to me and to the academic senate. And I am happy to see their passion for the students lives on in this board as well. And so I've said this before, it's always a pleasure to work with a calm, rational board who puts students first and not themselves first. So thank you.
Thank you for that, Dan. Faculty Association.
Good evening. I'd just like to echo my colleague's sentiments on the passing of the two board members. In addition to that, I would just like to also request and encourage the board to look over the emails they have been sent the last two board meetings, surrounding the last two board meetings. Those emails are from our faculty, the educators in our district, and they are the heartfelt stories of what's going on, what they need, and what they're looking for. My sincere hope is that these stories will help the district and its negotiation team be able to look and see what is needed further within their proposal to the Faculty Association. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Now moving on to our IVC, to the IVC Classified Senate. Not here. Oh, okay. Saddleback College Classified Senate.
Good evening. I just want to take a moment to introduce myself. My name is Erlin Balo. I've been with our district for 10 years now, and I'm happy to be serving as Saddleback's Classified Senate President for this coming academic year. I work with our Promise Program at Saddleback. I have done so since 2019. I'm very happy to report, I know this is not Classified Senate business, but we have 1,600 students ready to go for this coming fall, and we're going to be adding as we go along. I'm excited to share that we have a wonderful group of returning and new classified professionals that are joining our board this year. This is just a testament to the work that Michelle McDougal Jackson and Chantel Gill have done with Classified Senate at Saddleback for the past couple of years, and I'm just happy to float on in into that. They've, they've recruited many people. Later this week, we'll be having our Classified Senate Retreat. That's actually a joint venture with our IVC partners, their Classified Senate. We're going to be discussing leadership, how we're going to collaborate, goal set, all those things. So excited about that. Our caring campus at Saddleback, Saddleback Cares, had a kickoff earlier this summer. I'm not quite sure if it was June or July, but they sent 30 folks from our campus to the Disney Customer Service Training. This group is going to be bringing back a lot of those things that they learned. They've started a work group to design campus-wide training that will be offered to anyone at Saddleback. And there'll be two dates in September where anyone can attend, and we're looking forward to like all the new things that they're bringing to the campus. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for, it's good to have you here. CSCA, Scott Green.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, trustees, Dr. Barnes. First of all, I want to welcome Erlin Balo as our Classified Senate President. I can tell you from personal experience that she already has been a wonderful contribution to the classified professionals. There's a reason why she has been added to so many parts of different committees because of her intelligence and the way that she's able to analyze things. I'm very proud of her for taking up and stepping up and being a leader of Classified Senate. I also wanted to recognize, as CSCA does, the passing of our two trustees. I can tell you, having to, having worked close in proximity with Dr. Wright, anytime that he was the interim dean, when our dean was on vacation, we could go to Dr. Wright. And typical of a military man, he was very decisive in decisions, solved problems quickly. Dr. Wright truly is the definition of an officer and a gentleman. We have the CSCA Conference coming up, which starts a week from tonight. The theme is Together We Thrive. And there couldn't be anything more applicable to that motto, as we really, truly need to apply it today across this country. I know when I first became a delegate to the conference for the very first time back in 2007, the one thing that impressed me very much is the fact that there was democracy in action. As I've mentioned before, there are all party affiliations that are CSCA members that attend conference, and yet it is that word united, as in the United States of America, that really does apply, and it does work when we apply democracy. And so that impressed me, and I've been going to a conference ever since.
Thank you for that, Scott. Before we move on, note of personal privilege, I knew I forgot to say something. So there are a lot of people that work behind the scenes for this district, and we as trustees get a lot of support from the administration. Then I just learned that someone who's been assisting us for many years, this would be her last board meeting, Kristen Duggins, and I, so a lot of what, you don't see a lot of, it's not visible, a lot of the work they do, and Grace and Kristen, of course, you see the chancellor, who takes a lot of the glory, deservedly so. And we do too, as board members. But there are people behind the scenes that really help a lot, make us look good, provide us the services we need to be attentive to the needs of the, all of the, you know, participatory governance groups and constituents alike. So Kristen, we're going to, we're going to miss you. Thank you for your service to the district and for your support of trustees. We're now on to our Board of Trustees, 2024-2025 Goals. We've had, do you want to say a word about it? So it's, it's up for approval. I encourage everyone to take a look at them. We did have a long session to talk about our goals, and we did prioritize the goals as well. And I would say this is obviously a document that reflects our priorities for the next year. But I would, you know, we're, as, we as trustees are always open to fresh, new ideas and input on how we can improve and perfect our goals and better serve the district, better serve you, better promote student success, and be the best community college district, I believe, in the state. So take a look at, take a look at the goals, and I'm not going to read through all of them right now, but there are a lot of them are centered around student success, quality education, keeping our institutions among the best in the state and the nation, keeping our fiscal health, health in order, student equity, and, and being engaged in the community. And I think we've done a really increasingly better job of being visible in the community. We are not the best kept secret anymore. We're known. And that reflects everyone, faculty, the college leadership, the staff, and of course, students, outstanding students. We wouldn't be who we are without our outstanding students. And then our relationship with, with each other. I think we're civil. We actually agree a lot of the time. Occasionally, we don't. Not very often, but when we do, it's done in the, I think, in the spirit of civility and focused on student success, good outcomes for our district, and to keep our district providing world-class education that's affordable. And I think that's what we focus on, and that's what these goals are focused on. So I invite any other trustees, if they want to say any words about our, our goals.
Spoke eloquently.
No? All right. Chancellor, anything?
You did a great job. And I do want to also mention that these goals that were established also align beautifully with the new ACCJC standards. So the board is really being really proactive to ensure that they're meeting the goals that are related to, to board governance and effectiveness. So I was really grateful to be able to partake in the development of your goals.
All right. Well, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve our goals. Motion, motion from trustee Milchiker, was that? Trustee Rydell, second. Okay, let's vote on the item. The goals are approved on a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student advisory, student trustee yes vote. We're now on to authorization of payment to student trustee absent from board meeting. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion from trustee Milchiker, second from trustee J. Any, let's go ahead and vote on the item. Motion carries unanimously, seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. We do not have any presentations or discussion items, so we're now on to the consent calendar. Do we have any polls from trustees? Any items you want to poll? Seeing none, is there a motion to move the consent calendar?
So move.
Motion from trustee J, second from trustee Milchiker. Let's go ahead and vote. The consent calendar is approved on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. We're now on to Business Services, 10.1, the Master Services Agreement for Cloud Software for Student Refunds and Payment Plans, Merchant Services Agreement, TouchNet Information Systems, and Heartland Payment Systems. Is there a motion for approval?
So move.
Motion from trustee Milchiker, second from trustee J. Any questions? No? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries unanimously on a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. 10.2, Award of Architectural Services Agreement for Student Focus Camp, Student Focus Campaign Campus Wide Signage Implementation at Irvine Valley College. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion from trustee J.
I'll second it.
Second from trustee Milchiker. Any questions? Okay, let's vote on the item. The item carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 10.3, Saddleback College Student Services Center Renovation Project. Sure, we're excited to see this move forward. Architectural Services Agreement Amendment Number Two, 19-6 Architects. Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion. Motion from trustee Milchiker, second from trustee J. Any questions? Let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. We're now on to Human Resources. Acad- Calling HR?
We will answer.
11.1, Academic Employees and Academic Classified Administrators, Managers, Personnel Actions, Ratifications. I've been meaning to ask you, can we ever shorten this item?
I know, I know. You want us to reduce the title.
Or is this required?
It is not required, Danielle. Right behind me is going to work on that. Oh, she's not behind me.
I guess I don't have to read every item, but to be transparent, we should.
But yes, we will try to truncate it.
Okay.
We have no changes, however, in compliance with our legal obligation. We have one employment contract before you tonight. It is for a Mr. Michael Allen, Interim Dean of the Arts at Irvine Valley College. The contract dates are July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. Range 22, Step 6, annual salary of $240,720. Thank you.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve 11.1?
So move.
Motion from trustee Milchiker.
Second.
I'm, I'm going to break the monopoly and give it to trustee Rydell. It's a second.
Yeah. I don't want to.
And let's, let's, any questions?
I'm trying to make it easy.
Let's go ahead and vote on the item. The motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee abstention. 11.2, Classified Personnel Actions and Ratifications.
No changes.
No changes to the item?
So moved.
Second.
That's because I had one time.
Motion from trustee Prendergast?
And second.
Second from trustee Dack.
Yay. Yay, good.
And a comment from trustee Milchiker.
Yeah, I just want to mention that there's Stephen Gross, who has been the Senior Programmer Analyst in the district, is retiring after 27 years, and we wish him well and thank him for his work for our district. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other comments? No? Let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee abstention. 11.3, Police Officers Association Tentative Agreements.
If you'll indulge me for just one minute, it takes quite a bit of work to come to a resolution for a new successor agreement. Police Officers Association was the first union that we settled with in this cycle. I want to thank and acknowledge their president, Bo Arbuthnot, Officer Bo Arbuthnot, and Officer Lance Christensen at the table. They were fantastic. I also want to thank and acknowledge Karen Dubert, District Director, who served as chief negotiator over the POA negotiations, and thank her for her work collectively. It was a really respectful and meaningful time at the table, trying to come to agreement. And I want to thank POA for all of their efforts to bring a resolution to this contract. So thank you very much.
Well, it's really great news by Chancellor Viscount, and I think on behalf of the board, thank you, the POA and your team, for coming to this agreement. We're very happy to see this. Okay. So is there a motion? And a second.
So moved.
I think a motion from trustee Dack.
I can't, I can't get back to this.
Second from trustee J. All right. Second from trustee J, and let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee abstention. We don't have any items under Educational and Technology Services. Moving on to information items. Staff response to public comments from the previous board meeting. Don't need a motion from this. Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College speakers. And then the 13.3, Monthly Financial Status Report. Moving on to the written and oral reports from administration and governance groups. And we will kick it off with an update from Chancellor Barnes.
Wow, we have so much time. I remember last time I took a long time. So I actually just want to also extend my condolences to the families of our former board members, Jim Wright and Nancy Padberg. I had the honor of just meeting Jim just for a little short period, and in fact, during my open forum, he was the first one that came down and shook my hand and just was so genuine and warm. So, and I, I just appreciated learning a lot about him and also about Nancy Padberg. I'm going to, I'm reflecting upon a meeting that I had recently with Dan Walsh, and it's beautiful when you hear about the history of the district and the trials and tribulations that we've experienced. And I just, I want to acknowledge and honor our former board members and others who have been with us for a long time, because you have put, and they have put, their blood, sweat, and tears into this district and have really built the foundation upon which we are able to thrive in this learning and working environment. And so I think it's really important to honor the people who came before us, whether they're with us or not, and then to continue to do what Scott Green said. And that's, he said, it's being together we thrive, right? And so I think it's a sacred thing that we have in our district. So I really appreciate, again, those who came before us and those who have just worked so hard and continue to work hard to, to do what we need to do to make this a great district. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Chancellor Barnes. Now moving- Now moving on to Irvine Valley College President, John Hernandez.
Thank you, trustee Jamal. Yesterday, I had the honor of welcoming to Irvine Valley College, where the host site for the ACO, which is the Association of California Community College Administrators Admin 101. It is an intensive four-day experience for newly hired or administrators, aspiring administrators in the California Community College system. This is our second year hosting the site. I'm going to guess there are about 90 to 100 participants. And it was just wonderful to be able to share some highlights about the college, welcome them to the college, and share a little bit about my own leadership journey. Tomorrow evening, I will be making at their request a presentation at the Irvine City Council Chambers. They typically invite the college every two years to give an overview of the college as well as to provide a summary of their generous investment. As you all know, every two years, a memo of understanding comes before this board. The Irvine City Council has been, for many years, contributing about $100,000 a year, primarily to support student scholarships, but it also supports early college program at Beckman and some other student support venues. And so far in the history of this commitment, they've already invested over $1 million. So I am looking forward to providing that update and overview tomorrow morning, tomorrow evening, excuse me. And last but not least, we're prepping up across the campus, I'm sure at both colleges, for our fall opening. We are, I am personally thrilled that our enrollment trends are continuing. As you know, as a district, last year, we grew at about 15%, if I'm not mistaken, where the statewide average was only about 8%. Just so wonderful to see that district-wide, at this point in time, and I realize students will still be adding and adjusting their schedules for the fall, as a district, we're up about 9.64% from last year in headcount. At IVC, we're up almost 13.5%. And we've actually exceeded, for the first time, our pre-pandemic enrollment levels. So we are absolutely certain that it's going to be a very busy fall term with so many students, particularly incoming students. And then finally, looking forward to the FLEX or Professional Development Week. And if you don't already have it on your calendar, I hope you will join us at the IVC President's Opening Day, where I will be providing the state of the college at 2:00 PM in the Performing Arts Theater. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Saddleback College President, Elliot Stern.
I'll save remarks, as many trustees did, about Jim Wright for next month. This summer, in a little bit of downtime, I've become addicted to Duolingo. I am studying Spanish in a gamified environment that I will speak of during FLEX Week, as I, I think it, in many ways, it is a metaphor for the challenges that we're going to face in the next few years. But I am right now at a 56-day streak, and I need to complete a lesson before 9:00 PM. So these, and that ends my remarks.
All right. Very good. So Vice Chancellor of, the order here is Business Services, so Vice Chancellor of Business Services, Anne Marie Gable.
I wish I had a whole bunch I could talk about to ruin Elliot's streak, but no, I have no report.
All right. Vice Chancellor of Human Resources.
No report.
And Vice Chancellor of Educational and Technology Services.
Well, I do wanted to say a few things about Jim Wright. Many of you are probably aware that Jim Wright recruited me to the district. I wasn't looking for a job. It was an initial pay cut to come to the district, you know, dean salary, you know, year one, step one. But I reflect back on sort of how our conversation went, and he was, spent a lot of time talking about people. That's how he recruited me. And if I could sum it up, it was more about that your career and life choices are really bets on the future. And Jim lived that. So what I mean by that is, if you look at his personal life, he's a good husband, good fa, good father, good grandfather. And then if you look at what he did in the district with the faculty and the staff, we all know him as a calm, you know, calm and sympathetic, you know, kind of person, quiet demeanor. But more than once, we would do something and Jim would say, no, you have to listen to the faculty, you have to take care of the faculty, have to take care of the staff. He really recognized that the faculty and the staff were the resident experts in many domains that took care of the students. So he taught me to take care of faculty and staff, and that's how you take care of students when you're in administrative role. I don't want to end on something too sad. So there are a few of us who, out of love, and we grew up in the time where we would watch wrestling. So wrestlers would have these nicknames. So we gave Jim a nickname. So you would have, like, say Brett Hitman Hart or Dwayne The Rock Johnson. So only in this room, just for us, just one time, we referred to him as Jim the Gentleman Wright. So that was his wrestling name. So on behalf of Jim the Gentleman Wright, just want to say that career and life choices are our bets on the future. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Chris. Well, we are going to adjourn in memoriam tonight, and I'll mention three individuals who have sadly passed. First, we adjourn the meeting in honor of former colleague, Scott Smith, who passed away in late June. Scott retired in 2021 after 36 years of dedicated service to Saddleback College as the lead automotive diagnostic technician in our facilities, maintenance, and operations department. Scott was a veteran. He served in Vietnam as a helicopter mechanic, and his work helped keep many soldiers alive. Scott was known around campus for his dedication to his country and the critical job he performed, as well as his infectious smile. His commitment to his work at Saddleback College ensured that our faculty, classified professionals, and especially students were kept safe. He will be deeply missed. Scott is survived by his four children and five grandchildren. We share our condolences with his family and all who loved him. In addition, we will also like, we would also like to close tonight's meeting in honor of Nancy Padberg, who, you know, we honored at the top of the meeting with her daughter, Nicole, longstanding member of the board. Nancy truly did make an indelible impact on the South Orange County Community College District through her service and commitment to the two colleges. And last but not, most certainly not least, we must close the meeting tonight in honor of our dear friend, Jim Wright, who recently retired from the Board of Trustees and was a beloved member of the South Orange County Community College District community. Jim serves as, served as a trustee with integrity, vision, and unyielding passion for education. His contributions have been instrumental in shaping the future of our district and ensuring that our students receive the highest quality education. We honor his legacy, and we'll do more next month in the profound, profound impact he had on our community. Thank you and good night.